Yeah.
You want to put yellow over here?
Yeah.
Sam over here? Why do you think that thing happened?
It's the font.
Oh, really?
Yeah. That font is a hard nice.
An F?
An F.
What font is that? Really? That's weird. Okay. Okay. Oh, here it is.
Yeah.
Well, that's me. Jesus. Display ads. No, I'm gonna do first. I'm gonna do all. No, I'm gonna do. Ready? James? Gaggy already just laid in the act. The hour is upon us. I'd like to call the April 3rd meeting of the Catch Grand Planning and Zoning Commission to order. If you would, please rise and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on the nation and the land indivisible, with the liberty and justice of God.
This is why I'm angry issues because nothing's working this week. I'll just look on.
Oh, you're getting it.
I know. I'll have to move to Celeste. My screen's not working.
Mine is out too now.
No.
Yeah.
Is there a power button over there or something? Did you hit the switch over there?
What did you hit?
No.
I'm not it.
Oh, there it goes.
What did you hit?
It's a touch power button. Give it, give it a second.
She didn't.
Oh, oh, oh.
Sorry.
She can move over here. Right? She ever move over here?
Gonna have to just lean over.
She can move over here.
Chris? Celeste is not here.
Oh, she's not? Okay. Is it okay by switch?
Yeah. It's okay by me.
Anybody care?
She needs a name tags. Come, come on. Oh, la. Come, come over to our neighborhood. Okay. Uh, Eric, go ahead and call the roll.
Member Smith?
Aye.
Member Aldret?
Aye.
Member Vanderhayden?
Here.
Member Hubbard?
Here.
Member Peters?
Here.
And Chairman Benedict?
Here. Get you? Okay.
Okay. Any changes to the agenda? Mr. Chair, uh, items H4, H5, and H6 will be, uh, not public hearings. No action will be taken on those. We would just be discussing those items this evening, but no action will be taken and no public hearings held. So, four, five, and six. Yes. H7 will be? Yes. All right. Thank you. Commissioners, we have two sets of minutes to approve. Mr. Chair, make a, make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 6, 2025 regular meeting. Okay.
A second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 6, 2025 special meeting.
I'll second those two.
Thank you. Okay. Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good, that's passed. Okay. Next up is our consent agenda and as I recall, there's one item on the consent agenda. Uh, that particular item, DSA 2400198, the one thing on our consent agenda. These, this item, F1, uh, will be enacted by one motion, one roll called vote of the commission. And there wouldn't be any separate discussion for that item unless a commission member or somebody from the public would, would, uh, request to hear that presentation. Um, so if you're here for that, that particular, uh, concern, please let us know so we can pull it and have the presentat, full presentation done. Okay. Seeing none. Commissioners? Make a motion that, uh, we approve the, um, consent agenda, agenda item F1. Okay.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Okay. Let's go ahead and call the roll.
Member Smith?
Aye.
Member Aldret?
Aye.
Member Vanderhayden?
Yes.
Member Hubbard?
Yes.
Member Peters?
Aye.
Chairman Benedict?
Yes.
Okay. That's passed. Next on our agenda is the, uh, public comments portion of the meeting. Anybody from the public that would like to address the commission for matters that are not on our agenda? Welcome to come up. We love to hear from you. Uh, we not, can't respond to any of those comments directly and would appreciate if you could keep your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, members of the commission and Chairman Benedict. I'm John McGuire from 5088 West Buckskin Drive in Eloy, Arizona these days. Uh, been a while since I've been at this thius in front of this board, so I'm happy to be here tonight. And I'm here really just for one reason to speak tonight and, and, uh, as it's, I don't know how totally public it is, but I don't think it's a secret either that this is, uh, Director Tice's last planning and zoning meeting tonight. And I wanted to, uh, take a moment and thank him for all his work for the city over the last, it's gotta be 10 years plus, at least, uh, 12, I think, maybe.
Fifteen.
Fifteen years. I was only around for maybe 13 or 14 of those, but from the beginning, uh, Mr. Tice has had a good vision for the city, I think, and he's done a good job presenting both sides of every item that comes before this commission. Uh, there's been a lot of different people in the chairs, but Mr. Tice has worked with all of them well and done a great job and, and he's always been extremely open and helpful to me for the things that I do that most of you are aware of, that, uh, I need public access to things and he's always been extremely helpful and open with me and, uh, helped me get information out to people and that's, that's an important thing. And, and I, I'm going to miss him. I know he's gonna take a little break from my understanding and then, uh, we don't know what he's gonna do. So I'm not sure when we'll see him next, but, uh, I just wanted to take a minute tonight and make sure that the public we came in acknowledged him and thanked him for his service to the city. Thank you.
John, thank you for that. Anyth, anybody else? Yes. Very good. Anybody else? Doesn't have to be powdering him anymore. We can talk about something else if you'd like. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just want to seek for the minutes that Vice Chair Garza is now present.
Thank you. No problem. We're good. Uh, all right. With that in mind, I'll close the, uh, public comments portion of the meeting. Get to new business. Number H1, we'll have a public hearing. Consider forwarding recommendation to City Council for Brian Greathouse Birch and some other names I'm gonna mispronounce. For, uh, Quick Trip Corporation, zone change from UR to PAPAD on Tucker Road, DSA 2500020. And Jim?
It's moving everywhere today.
I'm gonna get started in just a second. We're trying to address some technical difficulties.
Mr. Chair, we're gonna try to, we're gonna have this. Make sure Hubbard can come over here to use this monitor.
Okay.
She loves moving around. I don't know. Anyway, I'm not the tech guy, so.
All right. So this item in front of you is for a zone change from urban ranch to planned area development to accommodate a proposed Quick Trip convenience store and fuel station. All right. This may seem familiar to you because a very similar request was in front of Planning Commission last year, but there have been some changes and I'll walk through those with you this evening. As I was mentioning, this is a zone change request involving approximately five acres and the subject area is at the southeast corner of McCartney and Tucker. And the request is for a planned area development zone to accommodate the convenience store and auto fueling. Now, a little bit of background. In October of 2024, there was also a request to change the zoning of the property to a planned area development zone, but it was specifically for a convenience store and auto fueling as well as diesel truck fueling. On the plan that was being considered at that time, as you can see highlighted on the screen there, there was an area for diesel truck fueling to the south of the store as well as an area for truck parking. City Council denied the zone change at its October 7th meeting because of concerns that the truck element would change the character of the area and then there was concerns about the, um, additional traffic on McCartney. Now, the zoning request that is in front of you this evening is for just a traditional convenience store and fuel station. There is no truck accommodations proposed and not only is it not proposed, but within the planned area development zoning document, it specifically prohibits it. Essentially, what this zoning document is for is to allow by right a convenience store and fuel station. The remaining area to the south of the store is reserved for future commercial development with B2, which is the city code's general business uses. Within the PAD guide, it does specifically allow for a convenience store with auto fueling as a by right use, but it specifically prohibits fueling in any accommodations for diesel trucks and specifically convenience stores and fuel stations are prohibited from providing showers, truck repair services, laundry services, truck washing, and customer parking longer than one hour. Otherwise, B2 general businesses are permitted and other uses, just like within our city's B2 zoning code, uses such as drive-through restaurants, car washes, self-storage would be subject to the consideration of a conditional use permit. Another thing that this PAD does is it limits freestanding signage to be monument style only, not taller than 15 feet. In an ordinary B2 zone, the sign height would be allowed to be 30 feet. So as a PAD, it builds in certain restrictions such as sign height and such as specific prohibitions like no truck accommodations. There is a major site plan that is also currently under review. It has not yet been scheduled for Planning Commission consideration. Should this PAD be considered for approval this evening, the PAD zoning document would find its way to council, uh, and council would be asked to be the, they would be the final authority on the zoning request. It is scheduled for, um, their April 21st meeting. Meanwhile, the major site plan component for the north half of the PAD is under review. And this is an excerpt from it. And what it shows is a 5,300 square foot, 20-foot tall convenience store with brick masonry elevations on all four sides and then a 7,200 square foot fuel canopy for the auto fueling approximately 22 feet tall. And this shows the elevation on its four sides. There is a technical modification that staff is recommending that Planning Commission consider, which is to revise the conceptual elevations and add text within the PAD stating that the maximum height of this fuel canopy is 22 feet. When reviewing zone changes and specifically for planned area development zones, this is the list of review criteria that the code suggests or the code requires have to be addressed. And the staff report goes into all of these criteria in greater detail, but I want to specifically talk about the three highlighted items because they're the most pertinent to the review of this. The first criteria that I want to talk about is conformance to the city's general plan. So within the 2030 general plan, this site sits within the commerce and business land use category. As you can see, between I-10 and Tucker is the commerce and business category. West of Tucker, the yellow area is the neighborhoods land use category. The neighborhoods category is more accommodating for residential. You'll find a lot more single-family residential development in that area. It does allow commercial sites on limited site sizes, but it's more of a neighborhood commercial type use, whereas within the commerce and business general plan category, they're designed to promote uses that, um, focus on their locations being next to interstates. And it identifies that, um, ideally it should be along major arterial roadways where auto-oriented uses are dominant. So McCartney Road is designed as a principal arterial, or not designed, but it's, it's, um, it is identified as a principal arterial road and as development occurs along that road, there's roadway dedication and roadway improvements to the standard of principal arterial design. The commerce and business category represents an effort to place auto-oriented uses in appropriate environments, ensuring that the location of office, commercial, and light industrial uses complements communities' urban design goals. So this area is right next to the neighborhood area and it is in a prominent location right by I-10 and right off of McCartney. So design features are looked at, although it's more specific to the major site plan when we dive into the specific nuances regarding architecture and landscaping. However, this PAD guide is embedded with a lot of conceptual detail that demonstrates that they are going to be designing it to help meet those goals. Further into the general plan for commerce and business, it does identify commercial as an appropriate land use. And as I was mentioning, over in neighborhoods, um, the, the type of businesses that are more supported there are neighborhood, commercial, and office. It could still theoretically allow gas stations. I mean, there, there is the Circle K that sits within the neighborhoods category, but, um, Quick Trip being Catty Corner, that location is more appropriately suited because it's in the commerce and business area. Also with regard to the general plan, we look at conformance to goals, policies, and applicable elements. So I want to talk about goal CB dash four. It talks about creating visibility without compromising attractive streetscapes or community character. And one of the action steps to achieve that is to cite auto-oriented businesses to appropriate locations along interstates and/or select arterial corridors. So as you can tell, the site does propose that adjacent to McCartney, it's heavily landscaped and they're proposing to cite the fuel canopy to the side of the convenience store. So between the convenience store and the southerly extension of Tucker. You know, typically when I think of gas stations, you'll see the, um, fuel canopy sitting in between the primary street and the store. So that's, that's a subtle design element that gives it more visual interest because you're, you're able to see the actual building, the store, more front and center than the, than the fuel canopy. Within the general plan, we also have a, a future trail corridor and identified is the McCartney Trail that is shown to in the future run between Palomino Parkway and then continue east on the other side of I-10 to Overfield. And this PAD also accommodates for that. They are, um, showing a DG path paralleling the public sidewalk along McCartney. So that's just another amenity that will help soften the site, um, with regard to this being a, a gas station and convenience store and, and what you see along McCartney. Another criteria that I want to talk about is the relationship of the plan elements to conditions both on and off the property. So where the subject PAD area is in relation to other uses or other designated uses, there's really a hodgepodge to the north as well as to the east and Catty Corner are all programmed for commercial uses. And all three of those areas can technically allow gas stations. Um, so this area, which is currently zoned urban ranch, is basically asking for a zone change to a zone district that will allow a gas station. Currently, urban ranch, the, the zoning that it presently is, is intended for very low density development. Um, the density is one house per 1.25 acres and that's not a realistic development in that location for that type of use, given its location to I-10 and along McCartney. And an urban ranch, by the way, is not considered in a, an appropriate zone district for the Commerce and Business General Plan category. So it is kind of a holding zone that's intended to ultimately be rezoned to accommodate a more intense use. I drew that arrow in there between the interchange of I-10 and Tucker because it does segue into the next criteria, but it also talks about conditions both on and off the property in that Tucker sits about a quarter mile from the interstate. An ADOT Arizona Department of Transportation has advised that Tucker would be the first intersection from the interstate that would be allowed full access. And by full access, I mean all turning movements. You can turn left, you can turn right, you can turn in, you can turn out. And there wouldn't be the opportunity for a full access intersection anywhere between Tucker and I-10. So when looking at the surrounding land use. So when looking at the surrounding land uses and the fact that, that urban ranch area that sits to the west and south of the site is more than likely going to be eventually re-envisioned for something more intense, and the fact that there is zoning to the east of the site that allows commercial uses, there's a need to look at circulation so that it too is not a detriment. And so this does segue into our traffic vehicular ingress and egress review criteria. And a lot of the conversation will probably center around traffic because that was a concern with the previous PAD request when there was the trucking element. So this is a layout of the five-acre PAD where the north half of the site would, would accommodate the Quick Trip or any type of convenience store. The south half of the development is reserved for future commercial development. But as part of the PAD and as the site goes to develop, the following things would occur. There would be right-of-way dedication for Tucker to the west, so that would be a southerly extension of Tucker. Currently, it sits to the north of McCartney, and that's where it deadends. But Tucker would be extended south. And with the development of the Quick Trip site, Tucker would be improved to the southern edge of the Quick Trip site, but the right-of-way dedication would continue all the way to the south end of the PAD. It also identifies a future east-west road on the south end of the PAD, which allows connections to properties both to the west, east, and south. So that as those properties all develop, they have right-of-way ability to get to Tucker at McCartney. There will also be additional right-of-way dedication for McCartney Road. Currently, McCartney from the center line south only exists as a fifty-foot-wide roadway easement, and so additional right-of-way dedication will occur with the development of this site to allow for roadway improvements that meet the principal arterial design This is my drawing to show all the turning movements that are going to happen at Tucker. There, there would be the construction of a left-turn lane going westbound on McCartney to go southbound Tucker. There would be a right-turn lane going eastbound on McCartney to go on southbound Tucker. And of course, there would be north and south traffic. And so this would necessitate a traffic signal. The TIA that is currently under review for the major site plan would suggest that a traffic signal is needed. And so as a technical modification, we are asking that the PAD guide be updated to state that the developer shall be required to construct a traffic signal at this intersection. And it would need to be constructed and accepted by the city in operational prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the first development within this PAD. However, the cost of the construction for this traffic signal is eligible for reimbursement through the issuance of traffic impact credits as set forth in a specific city code section. Within that city code section, it also allows for a development agreement so that there's some options for reimbursement that, for the traffic signal that would exceed this developer's fair share for the need for that, for that light. What's highlighted on the screen now, I feel like I needed to point it out because it's kind of subtle, but along the east end of the site in yellow, that's important to talk about because that is an access easement thirty feet wide, fifteen feet on the, on this PAD's property, and fifteen feet on the adjacent site's property to the east to allow access. Another way, not just to Tucker, but this access would only be allowed to be a three-quarter turn. It wouldn't be full access. And by three-quarter, I mean you can do right-in and right-out, and you can also do left-in with the construction of a turn lane to go left, but there wouldn't be the ability for it to be full access. The city is planning to do a McCartney Road improvement project. It's been funded and it's currently in design. And I'll walk you through some slides here that show those improvements, but essentially from the edge of the ADOT property at the interchange of I-ten, west to Penal, the plan is for McCartney to be two lanes in each direction with the center median and sidewalks on both sides. And of course, as development occurs prior to those city improvements, the developer will also have to, to contribute to some half-street improvements ahead of that. However, what this drawing shows is basically the plan for the various turn lanes and the traffic signal at Tucker and McCartney. This here shows the full expanse of the city improvement project for McCartney to, to show you the, the, the wide segment that is planned. And specifically, when you look at the close-up for the McCartney cross-section, it gives you a better idea of the various roadway improvements that will, that are planned. And of course, with the traffic signal there at Tucker. And then further to the west, I just wanted to, to highlight that adjacent, more adjacent to the McCartney Center neighborhood, these, this shows some improvements that will be put in by the city, of course, because there currently isn't that many lanes. But some of those improvements are, are about to be put in right now with the development of the apartment complex at the northeast corner of Palomino and Hennessy. One of the improvements that that apartment complex is going to be making, prior to them being able to occupy that building, is the construction of a traffic signal there. So in summary, and I know that was a lot of information, but basically the traffic impact analysis, a traffic impact analysis for the first PAD proposal and the first major site plan that had the trucking element had previously been accepted by both ADOT and the then-city traffic engineer. There's a new traffic impact analysis without the trucking ele, element. I almost said elephant. Under review by the city traffic engineer consultant. And while that is being reviewed, we do know that as, as ordinarily accustomed with any development, there would be dedication to be made for McCartney and Tucker and the new east-west road to the south of the site. And then there are going to be roadway improvements associated with this development made for McCartney as well as Tucker. In conformance with House Bill twenty-five-seventy-four, staff is required to talk about how a zone change affects housing and affordable housing. And so I don't want to take too much time on this. However, I should point out that its current zoning, urban ranch, does allow residential. This PAD is a commercial PAD, so it would not allow residential. And so that could have an impact on a grand scale for home affordability. But this is by choice, a request by the applicant to change the zoning. They believe that the zoning to a commercial designation is more appropriate here. Quick Trip is the one who is prompting the zoning, and it's, can be assumed that they have cited this location as an ideal location for their business, and it's not as of interest for it to have a residential component. And the commerce and business general plan designation, although does allow high-density residential development, we find that this proposal is more suitable than residential, high-density residential development, primarily due to the fact of a lot of other existing multifamily designated land nearby. The area to the east of the site, although it is a commercial PAD, has a component to it that does allow multifamily, and there's multifamily designated properties within close proximity. So we feel that, that this zoning is appropriate. Regarding the public notification and outreach process, we did send out notification initially in February to owners of property, including the McCartney Center HOA, within a thousand feet of the subject site, advertising for a neighborhood meeting that was held on the tenth of March. And then about a week later, we sent out notice to the same group of people and posted in the Casa Grande Dispatch announcing for this meeting, as well as note, mail notification for the planned April twenty-first city council meeting. And then a sign was posted on the subject site on March nineteenth. Regarding inquiries and comments and the neighborhood meeting, there was about a dozen attendees. Most were from the McCartney Center neighborhood. They did express concerns about traffic and curious about the scheduling of the McCartney Center improvements. Most expressed the sentiment that although they were happy to see that the trucking element was removed, they really feel that the full breadth of the roadway improvements to McCartney should occur before any additional development is approved along McCartney. I will say that with the development of Quick Trip and staff's requirement or recommendation to add the traffic signal element, there will be some, some interim improvements done adjacent to the store, turn lanes, et cetera, that will help mitigate the added traffic to that area for this business. And the, the trucking element has been removed, so that will help further reduce that impact. There were some positive comments that were received via email. One made it into your packet. The other was handed out just this evening. And then there was also a comment received recently that didn't make it into your packet but was handed out this evening that was not in favor of the project. The, it was from a resident of McCartney Center, as you'll see, who, who just believes that this area should stay residential, and they, they don't think that a gas station is appropriate along McCartney. Staff does make a recommendation, however, that Planning Commission move to forward to city council, a recommendation to approve this zone change from urban ranch to, to PAD, subject to the following condition of record and technical modifications. Another document that was passed out to you this evening was a refined list. I know the staff report had very raw comments because the Planned Area Development Submittal had just completed its review, but the bulk of the comments were ensuring that the PAD adequately addressed the development standards for this zone district. The condition of record is specifically with, regarding right-of-way dedication. Ordinarily, we would seek right-of-way dedication associated with a building permit. That's, that's really our opportunity to ask for right-of-way because at that point, they're going to be actually increasing traffic on right-of-way, and so that's our opportunity to ask for it. But this condition would enable us to seek it prior to a building permit if it is needed for the McCartney Road Improvement Project, for example. And it would also enable us to potentially get Tucker Road dedicated ahead of development as well. And then the technical modifications, I won't go through each of these, but there are eleven, which, like I say, are primarily to ensure that the development standards are clarified within the PAD guide. However, if you have any questions about any of these, or if any of these catches your eye, I'd be happy to talk about it with you in more detail. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, very good. Commissioners, yes.
I have one question, Mr. Chairman. Jim, you mentioned ADOT's involvement with the, with the road project and also the exit coming off of the southbound I-ten. Has any, has there been any discussion about the northbound exit onto McCartney as to the, maybe a signal involved over there? Because when this was going to be a, a truck project, I mean, that was a big contentious issue that the traffic coming off of the, off of the ten and then heading to the west on McCartney, with those cars flying over the I-ten, I mean, there's not a lot of room for error out there. So it would almost seem like if ADOT is looking at the other exit, that perhaps maybe they ought to take a look at, at this exit also because it's, it's not going to change. There's still going to be traffic coming that way.
Yeah, Chairmember Peters, that exit that you're talking about is under ADOT control, so any improvements that are done would, would come with their approval.
I realize that, but I'm just wondering if, if they had mentioned anything with these plans or anything.
No, and, and we do have our traffic consultant who may be able to weigh in on that a little bit more. However, the, the TIA that was done also did not find that to be a necessary recommendation. Although I, I think everyone would agree that, that that would most definitely help mitigate traffic. It was just found that it wasn't directly, immediately due to just adding the Quick Trip. It was kind of a greater concern for, for, you know, larger development.
Do you want to hear from, Clark, do you have anything to add on that?
Oh, no, not at this point.
Okay, very good. Okay, Commissioners, any other questions for staff?
Yes.
Yeah, I have one, just a clarification. You had mentioned that there was going to be a widening project in regards to McCartney, adding, I guess, an additional lane going in both directions. Is that correct?
Yes.
So would that be an actual, a, a separate lane as far as turning and concern in addition to those other lanes?
Yes, Chairmember Smith, there would not only be an additional through lane in each direction, but wherever there are intersections with roads and driveways, it's our policy now to have dedicated turn lanes for those. So it would be its own turn lane in addition to through lanes.
Thank you.
Anything else for staff?
Chairman, I have a question. This one's for Clark. So the, the widening project for Interstate Ten, does it come as far south as McCartney Road that ADOT's working on today?
If it's a two-lane section there today, it will go, it'll match.
Up with the existing three-lane section to the south.
Okay, so I think it is, if I can remember this late in the evening. Okay, so then that means that interchange will be, look a lot different once the widening construction's done.
Correct.
Okay, which would include a traffic signal, perhaps.
It is currently three lanes in each direction right there, though, unfortunately. It, it, it doesn't narrow to two until closer to the panel interchange.
Interchange?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, it is between those two.
Yep. I know, because I remember when my headache starts to happen.
Another question. Jim, the, the widening construction at McCartney that the city's doing, what would be the timeframe for the installation of the improvements through here?
Clark would be able to better speak to the timing for that.
Yeah, I, I know that they're going through the capital improvement program right now. And I was told this afternoon that the decisions have not been made for the CIP projects yet. So they haven't been established yet what's going to be built in fiscal year twenty-six.
Okay.
So I know what is being built on this corridor. It's starting at Penal and going to Treacle. That is scheduled to be constructed. This segment is phase two, and I'm not aware that it has been inserted into a fiscal year twenty-seven or beyond at this point. '27 or beyond at this point.
Okay. And then just finally, one last question is, in the future, the TIA and the PAD, are those normally approved before they get to the commission? It just seems like things are in flux right now with the way the documents are lining out.
So Commissioner Garza, you are right to assume that major site plans should, I know they don't always, and that's why you're asking the question, should have an approved PAD before we present it to you. Because it is important to understand if the driveway locations are adequate, if there needs to be additional mitigation for the proposed trip generation. But this is specifically why you were also not considering the major site plan this evening. It's for that very reason. Because although it was submitted at the same time as the zoning document, there were more comments that needed to be addressed and worked on and resolved prior to it being Planning Commission-ready. So instead, what's in front of you this evening is the zoning document that really, the primary focus of it is to determine whether the use is appropriate for this location, as well as the specific development standards within the PAD. Although there is a traffic element to the review of PADs, because one would have to ask, is the use appropriate given the traffic conditions, et cetera? I would say that it's a little bit further along than some zoning documents where a major site plan may not even be contemplated yet. It could be a speculative zone where it's like, we'd like to, in the future, put a gas station, but we have no idea what traffic implications are to be had. And ordinarily, we would say, well, we would get that with the major site plan. We would get a more specific traffic report at that time. So typically, it's more of the high-level review of traffic at the zoning stage.
Makes sense. So we'll see this again for a major site plan?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
Good, great. Commissioners, any other questions for staff? Okay, at this time, I'd like the owner or their representative to come forward, address the commission. Please give us your name and address for the record.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman, and members of the commission. My name is Brian Greathouse, here tonight on behalf of QuickTrip, or QT, as a lot of people know them as. I am going to forego a full presentation because Jim just gave a great one. Thank you, Jim, that was outstanding. As Jim mentioned, we have been to this commission before on the same site, and this commission voted 5-2 to recommend approval to the City Council. And at that time, we had seven semi-truck fueling bays on that plan. We went to City Council, we were asked by the council to have a neighborhood meeting. We had the neighborhood meeting, we reduced those fuel stations down to three. Then we went back to council, and we didn't have the votes to get the approval. And we were told many times by some of the council members and other neighbors that if you got rid of the semi-truck fueling stations, that we would support the case. We had a great neighborhood meeting. There are traffic concerns, but the traffic study that Jim was mentioning actually shows a 56.2% reduction in trips just by removing those semi-truck fueling bays. So in accordance with your prior approval and getting rid of those semi-truck fueling bays, we request your recommendation of approval here tonight again. Thank you, and happy to answer your questions.
Okay.
I've got some questions.
Questions, yes.
On the diesel fuel type thing, is it going to be like the QuickTrip that's on Florence now, the same setup as far as two diesel on each one, each bay, or something like that? Or what are you going to have for? I like diesel, so I gotta talk about diesel. I wanted the other one.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Daniel Chambers, I work for QuickTrip. To answer your question, yes, it's going to be just like the one that's on Florence. We will have diesel, but it's not for the over-the-road trucks. It's for the semis and your cars that take diesel. So we'll have diesel for cars and light trucks, not over-the-road trucks, not the big semis.
All right, well, thank you. I was for, obviously, the first time around because I've got a fifth wheel, and I know I've only got one gas station I can go to in town and put fuel in. If I'm hooked up, I can't fit. And so I was, and the horse trailers and everybody else that's out there off McCartney Road, I'm sure they would have appreciated that too, but we'll go with what you have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, now I'd like to open for the public portion of the meeting. For this subject, anybody from the public like to address this subject? Please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments to the three minutes. And try not to repeat if somebody else has already said it. Try to keep the repetition down a little bit. We'd all appreciate it for the time. So anybody from the public like to address this issue? Please come forward.
Hello, my name's Denise Wilder. I live behind Circle K, 1797 East Chaparral. My only question, I'm glad they got rid of the diesel pumping stuff. My only thing is the zoning change, urban to the pad. I just have a question about that. I'm not understanding, if you can still build on the urban part, why do we need to change it to a commercial pad? So that's my, really, my only issue. But I'm glad with the regular stuff, and, but, so I just need a clarification on the zoning change before I can be 100%.
So let me repeat real quickly the comment that the staff had made, that that zoning is a kind of a holding pattern, please correct me if I'm wrong. It's kind of a holding pattern because we're not, you know, there's a lot of land out there that's zoned very similarly, that we don't know what's going to go there. We don't know what's going to be best for it at the time. And so it's a hangover from, you know, from previous years when there wasn't, we had no idea what was going to happen there. So staff, want to make any comment to that?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that Urban Ranch doesn't allow commercial development. It allows for agriculture development. By that, I mean you could have, you could have like a barn or hay processing, so that, like an agricultural commercial would be okay when it's in conjunction with farming operations. But otherwise, it's more of like a residential estate-type development where the minimum lot size is an acre and a quarter.
Gotcha, so we, right, as it is, even housing that went in, it still had to be an acre and a quarter?
Right, it's more like the types of homes you see on the east side of I-10 in the county. That isn't technically urban ranch zoned. It's probably general rural, which is the county zoning, but it's very similar. That, if that were in the city, I would say, yeah, that looks like an urban ranch development pattern.
Okay, great. Hope that helped. Anybody else in the public like to address this issue? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public portion and bring it back to Commissioners.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
That would be great.
I'd like to make a motion to forward a recommendation to City Council to approve DSA 2500020, subject to the following condition of record and technical modifications.
Okay, very good. I have a motion.
A second.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Member Smith?
Aye.
Member Aldret?
Aye.
Member Vanderhayden?
Yes.
Member Hubbard?
Yes.
Member Peters?
Aye.
Vice Chair Garza?
Aye.
Chairman Benedict?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good luck with the project. Okay, next on our agenda, we will have a public hearing and consider recommendations for City Council for DSA 250009 and 0010 for Colliers Engineering. And this is Jaclyn.
Yes, good evening, Commission. This is DSA 25009 and DSA 250010, Grandy Valley Minor General Plan Amendment and Zone Change. The site is located along Cascaran Miracopa Highway and the UPPR and Indian Valley Road. It's approximately 2,250 acres. This was before you, last fall, for a Major General Plan Amendment. So the two requests tonight are a Minor General Plan Amendment to change the growth area from Phase Two to Phase One, and a zone change from Urban Ranch, Grandy Valley North Plan Area Development, and Grandy Valley PAD. Both of these PADs included commercial and single-family residential, and the zone change is to I-2 General Industrial. Regarding the review criteria for Minor General Plan Amendment for growth areas, here are the five categories. They are covered in the staff report, and staff finds that this criteria has been met. Again, this is a site for industrial site that can be met by growth area Phase One. Regarding the zone change review criteria, here are the three review criteria covered in the staff report. I'll be going into detail on a few of these, all these. The first one is that the action is consistent with the city's general plan, including goals, policies, and other applicable elements. Goals and actions of manufacturing industry, goal number one is to provide and expand the manufacturing industry land uses and accommodate a variety of industrial industries. Actuarant 111 is to identify locations where it would be beneficial to increase the manufacturing industry areas within the city. Again, as you can see from the general plan map, this area has a lot of frontage along the UPPR, and this makes industrial zoning appropriate in this area. Political element, land use element number two, guiding principle, oh, excuse me, guiding principle number two is that community growth should be driven by industrial, corporate, office, professional services, financial services, research and development, other similar developments which offer opportunity for higher-paying, quality jobs. Regarding review criteria number two, that a rezoning conforms to general plan if it proposes land uses densities or intensities within a range of identified uses of the general plan. And while the I-2 is appropriate zoning in the manufacturing industry general plan land use category, we do not have specific densities nor intensities for these properties within this land use category that pertains to general industrial. However, I-2 is appropriate in the manufacturing industry land use category, and any compatibility that's needed can be achieved through the major site plan stage if needed. And finally, the proposed action is, proposed zone change is necessary and proper at this time to meet the land use needs of the city, presence of the city. Suits current demand for general industrial is significant. This rezone would expand that area. Just to the south, recently rezoned PAD for the Santa Cruz Mine. And again, we're seeing a trend to change the existing PADs in this area that were done in the early 2000s for housing and commercial to manufacturing industry. The site, this area being adjacent to the UPPR, and there's floodplain issues, make this more conducive. Regarding the stakeholder process, staff sent out applications and review in February to property owners within 1,000 feet, and staff and applicant met all the other requirements for publishing and notices, and I did not receive any comments or inquiries. So staff's recommendations, forward a recommendation of approval to City Council for Minor General Plan Amendment to change the growth area from Phase Two to Phase One, and to forward a recommendation of approval to City Council for the zone change request from Urban Ranch, Grandy Valley North PAD, and Grandy Valley PAD with the following condition of record. I just want to note that this is our typical right-of-way requirement, but it has been updated from the staff report to include language that was done in a text amendment in 2024 in 1768, 550. So just wanted to highlight that there for you, Commission. Happy to answer any questions the Commission may have.
Okay, Commissioners, any question?
I have a quick question.
Thank you.
The, Jaclyn, what is that small triangle that remains that is not included in this PAD?
That, right there?
This tiny little green space. A rectangle. Not a triangle. See? Boy, I worked all day.
Long day, huh? Okay, that's good, we're good, we're good. We all do it, we all do it.
May have the applicant address that, but it is, looks like it's probably a parcel that is not owned by this property owner, so it will say Urban Ranch.
Urban Ranch, okay. Just hate for someone to buy something and put a large home on it in the middle of a bunch of industrial.
With a sprinkler system going right across it. That's the round circles are sprinklers.
Cell tower.
Oh, I like it, yeah. I wish I had one. Okay, any other questions for staff? Okay, okay, seeing none, would the applicant or their representative please come forward to address the commission?
Good evening, Chair and Commission members. Cindy Paddock, Colliers Engineering Design, 2141 East Highland Avenue, Phoenix, Arizona, 85016. Jaclyn is correct, that little tiny parcel is, and our parcel that's not owned by the applicant tonight, so it's not included in the application. Good eyes. Jaclyn did a good job. As she noted, this is just worth just following up to the general plan amendment that was done last year. This is just a follow-up, but there's a lot of demand for industrial in this area along the UPR road and the Cowtown Road, maybe in the Miracopa-Cascacon Highway, and we're just trying to make land available for interest in development. And I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Very safe. Now I'll open the public portion of the meeting for this issue. Anybody from the public like to address this issue? Please come forward. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public portion of the meeting and bring it back to the commission.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
That would be great.
I'd like to make a motion to forward a recommendation to City Council for a Minor General Plan Amendment to amend the growth area from Phase Two to Phase One, DSA 250009.
Second. Very good, got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Member Smith?
Aye.
Member Aldret?
Aye.
Member Vanderhayden?
Yes.
Member Hubbard?
Yes.
Member Peters?
Aye.
Vice Chair Garza?
Aye.
Chairman Benedict?
Yes.
Okay.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
I'd love it.
I'd like to make a motion to forward a recommendation of approval to City Council for the zone change request, DSA 250010, from Urban Ranch, Grandy Valley North PAD and Grandy Valley PAD with the following condition of record.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Member Smith?
Aye.
Member Aldret?
Aye.
Member Vanderhayden?
Yes.
Member Hubbard?
Yes.
Member Peters?
Aye.
Vice Chair Garza?
Aye.
Chairman Benedict?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, next, H3. Yep, still hold a public hearing, consider forwarding recommendation to City Council for a request by Rick Miller for a zone change from I-1 to I-2, DSA 250005. And it's the Jaclyn Show again.
Good evening. The site is located at the southeast corner of Thornton Road and Ash Avenue. It's approximately 36 acres. Request is to change the zoning from I-1 Garden and Light Industrial to I-2 General Industrial. Here's the review criteria. Again, I'm just going to go covering one and three on this one, because I'm going to go into a little more detail on number three. Again, regarding the action is consistent with the general plans, including the goals, policies, and other applicable elements. Again, goals and actions is to provide and expand the industrial land use areas to accommodate a variety of industries. And again, while we are generally supportive of expanding the industrial uses east of Thornton, we do want to ensure compatibility, so I'll be addressing that on the next slide. Just want to give you a little note on that. Regarding number three, that the proposed zone change is necessary and proper at this time to meet the land use needs of the city. Again, while its current demand for general industrial is significant, this rezone would expand this area. Again, while staff's supportive of I-2 zoning, this would include an island of I-2 with an I-1 zoning. It is adjacent to a food processing plant to the north, and it is It is adjacent to a food processing plant to the north, and is relative proximity to city's downtown land use category and existing and proposed residential development to the east. So through conditions of record that I'll be showing on shortly, associated with the zone change, and during the major site plan process, staff will ensure that appropriate buffers and mitigation measures will be incorporated into the final design to expand, ensure development is compatible with existing and future development adjacent to the site and the downtown area. So those proposed conditions are that any storage of volatile or explosive materials shall be limited to no more than 10% of the floor area, and no outdoor storage of explosive or volatile material that would propose a potential public safety hazard as determined by fire and/or building code, and that all outdoor storage shall be screened by decorative masonry block wall matching and/or complementing the principal architecture of the site along Thornton Road. Number three is because Thornton is considered a gateway to the city, so we do want to make sure that it is screened from anything that would make it ugly. And the applicant, I did work with the applicant on these conditions, and they are in agreement to them as well. Regarding the stakeholder process, applications in review were sent out to property owners within a thousand feet in January, and staff and the applicant met all the other requirements. I did not receive inquiries or comments on this request. So again, staff recommends forwarding a recommendation of approval to City Council for the zone change from Garden and Light Industrial I-1 to General Industrial I-2 with the following conditions of record, as noted. And again, I just want to show the highlighted changes to number four. So happy to answer any questions the Commission may have.
Okay. Commissioners, questions for staff? I guess I, um... I'm interested, I, anyway, I'm concerned about this moving that, you know, continuing to move more industry closer, heavier industries closer in. I appreciate what you've done with that, you know, with those additional requirements. Yeah, it's just concerning to me. I don't know that I have a question, general comment. Any, none from staff? Okay, the applicant or their representative, please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Rick Miller, 1559 East Brenda Drive in Casa Grande. Here representing tonight Orchard CG Investors LLC. With me tonight are Mike Bigger and DJ Brown, the property owners. First of all, I'd like to compliment Jaclyn and the thorough review and communications that she's had with us through our application process. Also like to say congratulations to Paul Tice. I think it was 15 years ago I drove you around town, I believe, and showed you the town when you took my job here. It never gets out of your system, Paul, so don't think about retirement. But anyway, representing the owners of the property this evening, they are making a request to rezone the property from I-1 Light and Garden Industrial to I-2 General Industrial. We agree with the conditions. We believe that, you know, that these conditions are necessary to mitigate any potential concerns with the adjacent properties, especially the Daisy Bran Food to the north, and as you're getting a little closer to the downtown area. You know, the general industrial zoning classification does open up some additional opportunity to allow the city to expand its industrial base. Here, the community has been extremely successful in landing some very high-quality industrial users in this particular region. This location is ideal for industrial development with the available infrastructure readily in place there along the Thornton-Ash Avenue area. You know, the, the I-1 does allow for, if you look at the two districts side by side, the I-1 Light Manufacturing does allow a little more for commercial activities, and I think they, where you'd see more maybe customer traffic coming to and from a facility, where the I-2 wouldn't allow as much of the commercially designated activities. But it does open it up for the, for my client to market the property for users that may take raw product, raw materials, and manufactured product from raw materials. That's really the biggest difference between the general industrial and the I-1 zoning, which the I-1, you have to take material that's been previously assembled and assemble it into some kind of a product, where in this case, you can take raw material and assemble it into products. Again, we are not objecting to any of the conditions, no intentions to have any industry that would be, you know, a potential hazard to the area within the way of explosives or volatile materials. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. The only other thing I'd like to mention is, through the conversations in the past, you know, the, your interim traffic engineer, Clark, and the applicant here, and others have had discussions about future major site plans and access to this parcel. That will be addressed in future site plans. This applicant doesn't have a prospect in mind right now. They will eventually, if they are successful in finding a prospect on this property, they'll be in for a major site plan review. But one of the issues that's really important for them is to have ingress, egress off of Ash Avenue, and I believe the traffic engineer previously said that they could have up to three on Ash Avenue, and then a right-in, right-out only onto Thornton Road. And I'll leave it with that at this point, and happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Okay. Rick, I appreciate you, good, good start in explaining why, you know, this is needed, well, requested, anyway. And, you know, I'm sitting there, well, just looking at the picture, there's, you know, several users in that area, so it's, it's not, you know, it's not stopping folks from using the area. And, you know, the concept was that, you know, you've done it more years than I have, that the concept of that buffer zone is concerning. But they don't have a specific user at this point. Is that correct?
Correct, that is correct. Not at this point in time, they, if they had a user that's going to potentially produce noise, smoke, glare, or other things that you're concerned about for the area, they would have to come through a conditional use permit process separate from this application.
Yep, done, done there.
And I know that the property immediately to the west is all I-2 General Industrial. If you look north of Highway 84, Diamond Plastics is General Industrial, so there's, you know, there's, it's not making, you know, the first attempt to come across Thornton Road, and I think the safeguards are there, built into the ordinance for the conditional use, and with the safeguards that they put into the conditions, I think we're okay with this.
Okay. All right, no other? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll open the public portion of the meeting. Anybody from the public like to address this issue, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public portion of the meeting and bring it back to Commission.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to consider forwarding a recommendation to City Council for a request to change from I-1 to I-2 for DSA 250005.
Okay.
Second.
With the, did I hear with the conditions?
Yeah, the conditions of record, sorry. Add the conditions of record.
Okay.
I don't know if I missed, but I just want to make sure.
With the conditions of record, for a favorable recommendation with the conditions of record, yes, favorable, yes.
Right, for approval, okay.
Yep.
Okay. For a good second?
Second.
All right. Okay, I've got a motion in a second. Any discussion? So, my discussion, you guys heard my concerns. We keep pushing for, you know, for more of these industry, more employment, which is, you know, that's hard to disagree with. It does concern me that we are pushing heavier and heavier, and I don't know what this is, so, you know, I don't know what this is going to be, and we don't know, you know, what the applicant's going to be like. And to me, until that point, we just will leave the little bit of safeguard we have in place. Guess what my vote is? So, any other comments, any other discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Member Smith?
Aye.
Member Alderett?
Aye.
Member Vanderhayden?
Yes.
Member Hubbard?
Yes.
Member Peters?
Aye.
Vice Chair Garza?
Aye.
Chairman Benedict?
No. Most passes? Thank you, gentlemen. Good luck with the project. Okay. Okay, next, oh, we're not holding a public hearing for this. We'll consider, consider forwarding a recommendation to City Council for DSA 2400171 for a change text amendment to the citizen review process, right? Okay.
Okay, there we go. I'm going to talk about, is it H4, 5 and 6, what are my numbers?
Yes.
Yeah, H4, 5 and 6 together. And as I mentioned, we're just going to have a bit of a discussion, we're not going to hold a public hearing, we're not going to have a vote. And so, as you know, the materials I provided to you was, were some pretty extensive zoning code text amendments. We had a brand-new chapter that we authored called Citizen Review Process, changed kind of the community engagement process that we might engage, use to process various of our various development applications. We modified our administrative procedures a bit, and we revised our permitted use in CUPs. And those were, those were the, the three items that we were prepared to discuss tonight until this morning, when I read that the governor signed a new piece of legislation into law called HB 2447, which I just gave to you. And HB 2447 makes significant changes to how we are going to process applications. So I'm going to take a second and read it to you. It's really short. And actually, this was a statute that was passed last year, but it was passed in a way that was optional for communities, but now it's mandatory. So, here's what it says. It's in 9-500-49 of the ARS. Says, "Notwithstanding any other law, the legislative body of a city or town shall," not "may" any longer, "by ordinance do the following: authorize administrative personnel to review and approve site plans, development plans, land divisions, lotline adjustments, lot ties, preliminary plats, final plats, and plat amendments without a public hearing." So what does that mean? As you know, with the study session, we talked about the administrative procedures as 17, Chapter 1768, kind of making some of our site plan reviews administrative, right? We had limited buildings of 16,000 square feet or smaller could be administrative, ones that were larger were going to go, could go to planning commission. We, we had drafted provisions that those minor site plans that could be reviewed administratively by staff, there were appeal rights to planning commission to get hearings by both the public and the applicant, but the larger major site plans, the more complex, the more controversial, would still come to planning commission as major site plans for a public hearing. My initial read of this is that every site plan in the community now has to be reviewed administratively, that the planning commission will not be seeing any site plans. The next thing that is questionable, and I've talked to the city attorneys about this today a little bit, and we need to do some more research, is, okay, so staff makes, reviews the site plans and makes a decision to either approve or deny, is that decision appealable to planning commission? And if so, what does that appeal look like? Is that a public hearing appeal, an appeal with no hearing? What happens there? Don't know the answer to that question, we need to sort that out. So clearly, we need to revise 1768 now to comply with these new rules. We need to kind of think about the new rules and dive into them a little bit and talk to our peers, and, because it's, it's pretty earth-shattering from a planning perspective, really, probably for you, too. I mean, you had a lot of debate about what level of plans you wanted to see, and what ones you were comfortable letting staff see, and the legislature has now made that decision for you. So, we're going to, to revise that. Now, the good news is, is that, you know, on the Citizen Review Process, Chapter 1766, we had already expanded that to allow a lot more public engagement and stakeholder process during the internal review stage, right? Which now, all the stakeholder process for at least site plans and plats and those other documents, those other applications that are referenced, all that public engagement will happen at the internal review stage, pre-app stage, because there won't be any public hearings. Looks like, you know, we'll still hold public hearings on general plans, general plan adoption, general plan amendments, zone changes, zoning text amendments, conditional uses, all of those will continue to have public hearings, but not site plans, minor or major site plans. We probably won't even have minor or major, we'll probably just have site plans, because there's no reason to have a differential between them any longer. So... So that's what we were trying to do, but I guess we didn't go far enough. The, and so we talked about Citizen Review Process, I mean, that's not really going to change. We just need to, we, you know, 1768 and 1766 and the other permitted uses and conditional use changes, they're all so intertwined that we can't move forward with one of them without moving them all as a package, because they reference to each other. So we're just going to ask that, that we not vote on any of those this evening. But we'll review HB 2447 at the staff level, talk to our peers, determine the modifications that need to be made to our application review process to comply. We'll modify 1768, that's where all the modifications will occur, mostly in the site plan section, and we'll bring it all back to the planning commission. Somebody will bring it back to the planning commission. But it'll come back. It's good, I, you know, we kind of got this thing to the, to the one-yard line, but we got sacked in the end, it got sacked, so we, we have to regroup and, and take another run at it. But it'll be back. I'm actually scheduled to, I was scheduled to brief City Council on Monday night on the zone change, on these text amendments. I'll have the same conversation with council on Monday night that I'm having with you tonight, and we'll just give them sort of the overview, and then we'll go back to the drawing board a little bit and, and take another run at it. So, I know you've had some time to review the code changes that we did draft. If you have any questions or comments on those, I can entertain those for you tonight and try to answer them. Other than that, we'll, we'll just come back when this, when we've regrouped.
Okay. So I probably misspoke, we're not taking any action, we're not making any recommendations for...
Nope.
For 5 and 6.
You are not.
Per, per Paul's question, Commissioners, is there anything, comments you want to make about, as per his, his request, his question?
I guess I do have a question, but I guess it's kind of how it's being interpreted. And the way I read it is not that it has to be approved administratively, but that it opens up that avenue for a jurisdiction to approve it administratively, but we can still require a public hearing for those items if it was originally required by state statute to have a public hearing. And so if now it's saying, you don't need to do a public hearing, you can do it administratively if you would like. if you would like, but we still have the option as a municipality to require a public hearing for these, and require them to come to planning commission. 'Cause what I'm saying is authorize administrative personnel to review and approve. It's not saying require administrative, and that's where, it's just authorizing the city to go a different route administratively for some of these items, rather than requiring a public hearing for some of them, like is currently, or was currently, or had been required by state statute. That, that's how I read this.
You know, Commissioner Alderett, I, I understand that, the question is, is it authorized or is it required, right? That first word. But if they weren't going to require, they didn't have to change the may to a shall, because the may did exactly what you said, right? Cities may do it. Now we have, now it says shall do it. So, I don't know, it's a great question, I'm sure our city attorney's gonna go consult with other city attorneys on what the legislative intent was here and how they're interpreting it, go to Arizona City of Leagues and Towns, Cities of Leagues and Towns, and talk about it. So, you know, I hope you're right, I really do. But if you're not, then, you know, but we need to take a pause, figure it out, understand and regroup.
After all, you guys weren't doing anything else, right? There's nothing else going on, oh my God.
Paul, I have a quick question.
Yes.
Who, I guess, who brought House Bill 2447 to the floor? What legislator can we appreciate for that?
Get him!
Well, I want it for the minutes, because I, the public needs to know that that particular person didn't want their involvement in the development process. So, if, this isn't a commission, you know, I think, whether we're here or we're not here, this is, they didn't want the public's input about what was happening within the cities and towns.
You know, I just read that tonight, it was cosponsored by two Republican legislatures. Mark, do you know who it is? I think it's Carbone, maybe?
No, I didn't, I didn't look at who sponsored it.
It would be nice to know.
But you can find, you can find it on AZledge.
Okay. Yeah, it's just, it's just hard, it's not even just that, it's the fact that, you, you know, down further, it talks about the inspections and the construction of the development are to be done by their own services, right? So, there is no city or town oversight in the development process of what they build or what they plan for. So, it's a little scary.
I agree.
Wow. Okay.
One more comment. On the permitted uses for the industrial zones, this is kind of a late thought by me, but something that I didn't see while going through all those uses, that has become a much more recent technology and use that has come online in Arizona particularly, is battery energy storage systems. And we currently don't say where that would be permitted, or at least what umbrella use that would fall under. So, just a thought that maybe that's something we could add and provide some standards for it, 'cause I know a lot of jurisdictions have been caught off guard by people coming in asking to do these things. So, it'd be probably a good idea to have those in place.
No, I agree, that's a good point, battery, battery storage, we'll add that. We did add data center, if you'd noticed that, because we thought the same thing, we're gonna get some data center proposals, and we don't have that listed as a use, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, good point, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, anything else on this subject that's not our issue? I guess, wow. Okay, so, I take it we are to H7?
You are.
Okay, very good. So, we will have a public hearing and consider forwarding a recommendation to City Council for a request from the planning department for some zoning text amendments, and Sam's?
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners, I've got a, a little bit lighter subject matter. We are gonna try to, to help out our community here by cleaning up some code that just needs a little bit of fine tuning. So, I'm here to present DSA 2500031, this is zoning code text amendment. DSA 2500031, we're here to hold a public hearing and consider forwarding a recommendation to City Council for a request by the City of Casa Grande Planning Department for the following zoning code text amendments, and you can see them listed there. So, the overview, the revisions to the above referenced code sections are being made in two parts. The first set of revisions is to remove the corner lot width exception that requires 200 feet of lot width for corner lots in the B2, B4, and commercial office zone districts. So, if I go back to that initial picture, currently that tealish-blue square there is what we require for corner lots, that green square there is what we would require for any, like mid-block lot, something that was not on a corner. So, what we're, what we're doing is, we're saying, we're getting rid of that additional 50-foot requirement for corner lots, so that it's uniform across the board. And we have the same, or in our I-1, I-2, and other commercial zone districts, we do not have that extra width requirement on corner lots. So, this will bring all of our commercial and industrial zoning districts into the same requirements for block widths, not the same lot width requirement, but the same standard of requirements, without the exception for larger lots on corners. And then the second amendment is to remove the languages, or the language within the B1, B2, B3, B4, I-1, and I-2 zone districts, referencing zoning codes 1756090 and 1756100, as these two sections were removed with the recent rewrite of Chapter 17.56, Parking and Access. These provisions were removed as Section 1756080 of Code References, the current driveway access requirements, and that the provisions of the access management standards apply. So, we had initially three sections of code that this was referencing, we rewrote that code, only one section remains, so we're just removing the reference to the two now superfluous zoning sections. So, specific provisions to code 1724160, 1728070, and 1730505, this is the lot width exception. We want to remove the exception that corner lots shall have a minimum width of 200 feet. A 150-foot lot will allow for greater flexibility when developing many of our existing infill businesses and commercial office zone lots, but also, like I said earlier, brings these districts in line with other business and industrial zoning districts, none of which have that corner lot width exception. So, as we, as we make these lot requirements more standardized and smaller, it's going to allow more development in that, especially with our infill lots, which many of them are already more narrow than they should be, as they were built or plotted before we passed these zoning codes. So, we've got some lots that would like to do something different, but they're restricted by not having quite the lot width requirement. So, this is gonna free up some availability for development. So, then the specific provisions proposed of the following code sections, you can see them there, this is that removal of the superfluous code reference. And this, for your reading, is the access standards that currently exist within the 1756080, I have it here, it is also in the staff report, so that you can see that all of that was rewritten into 080, and that nothing that we're, no reference that we're removing still contains any of that text. There wasn't a change specifically to the, all of it, it was just kind of put into a single section with some revisions. So, that still exists, the code still references the important bits, we're just getting rid of the extra. With any zoning changes, we look at conformance with House Bill 2547, the three standards are there, the proposed text amendment don't impact development applications for residential developments. So, accordingly, the impact of this zoning code text amendment should be neutral, have no effect one way or the other on the cost of housing. Public hearing notification for this meets the requirement set out by City Code, a publication of a display ad in the Casa Grande Dispatch was done, mailed, oh, we did not mail out any mailers, I do apologize, and a sign was not required for this application, so we did not post a sign. My apologies, but we have received no inquiries about this proposal. So, at this time, staff recommends that the planning commission forward a favorable recommendation to City Council for a request by the City of Casa Grande Planning Department for the following zoning code text amendments, and you can see them there. Are there any questions at this time?
Commissioners, any questions for staff? Okay. And planning and zoning is the applicant, do we get to get that part? And so, we will open the public portion of this hearing, anybody from the public like to address this issue, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public portion of the meeting and bring it back to the commission.
Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
To forward a favorable recommendation to City Council for the Casa Grande Planning Department for the following zoning code text amendments listed A through I.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Member Smith?
Aye.
Member Alderett?
Aye.
Member Vanderhayden?
Yes.
Member Hubbard?
Yes.
Member Peters?
Aye.
Vice Chair Garza?
Aye.
Chairman Benedict?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, planning director, one last time. Yes, one last, let's see, is this on? Would cut you off?
Now, we're good, battery might have been dead. Alright, let's see what we have here, do we have anything to report? Minor site plan, couple of those, extension of a structure at Christ Assembly Church, ice machine, Board of Adjustment did approve a variance for a sign at New Island Liquor because their other sign got hit by a car, knocked over, and was, so they needed a variance to reconstruct one. And they denied a variance by, for a property on 1566 North Desert Willow, where they had a, what was that, James?
A mikvah.
A mikvah, a large mikvah in the backyard that was permitted, that was built without any permits, didn't meet our code, which means it now has to be torn down, rebuilt.
What is a mikvah?
What is a mikvah? James, tell them what a mikvah is.
It's a ceremonial bath that is used as part of a religious practice for the religious faith of Judaism.
Okay, thank you.
Alright. So, a couple other quick reports, first off, my replacement has been hired, gentleman by the name of Dan Coxworth, Dan is the current planning director for Cochise County, so he's gonna, and worked prior to that for the City of Sierra Vista for a number of years, as a senior planner in Sierra Vista. So, I'm sure Dan's, you know, gonna, he's a very talented planner, gonna do a great job, provide you with good guidance and support, planning support, so I'm, I'm sure I'm leaving you in good hands. You know, this morning, as I was thinking about this meeting and my retirement, I realized that I have attended over 500 planning commission meetings in my career. So, I've been a planner for 46 years, so it's definitely time to retire. But I'm gonna tell you that I've had the pleasure of, of working with a lot of commissions, but this commission is one of the best that I've ever worked with, so I want to thank you for all your, all your service to the community and your good work. So, thank you.
Very kind of you to say that, you didn't have to anymore, so I guess it really, I guess you really meant it, right?
I may have written something down too, for Paul.
Did you now?
Yes, because I knew I would be tired.
This might be the time...
To say it?
To say it!
Alright.
Unless someone disagrees. We can shout it out.
Thank you, thank you for your service to the City of Casa Grande, Paul. One of Paul's greatest strengths has been his ability to explain complex planning concepts in a way that are clear and understandable. Whether guiding his team, working with stakeholders, or helping the commission navigate some difficult decisions, he's always taken the time to ensure that we understand not just the details but the bigger picture. His patience and willingness to educate others has been invaluable in shaping sound policies that will benefit the community for years to come. Kudos to you for being a public servant, even on the hardest days, when you've given more than you have left, when the praise is quiet and the criticism is loud, when the winds are small and the burdens are heavy, you still show up. We wish you all the best in the next chapter, whether that means more time for travel or enjoying some time off, congratulations on your retirement. I know it's a hard job.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Well, I was fortunate enough, I started a project many years ago with Rick, who is here, and Paul's the one that signed off on our project, so. So, you were fortunate that he came.
Yeah, they're both good to work with.
Wow, really well said.
I, I know what, I know what it takes to be one of, in that, you know, these positions.
Really well said, you were very, you are very much appreciated and have meant a lot for a lot of us, and certainly, your hand-holding has made a lot of difference for us, for a lot of us, and, and I would say that was for our effectiveness, and your friendship has been highly valued, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, commissioners, anything else? Okay, with that, I think we're adjourned.
Don't forget our special meeting.
Well, can we take...
Oh, come on! These four guys, they've really had it with us, huh? Yeah, give us five minutes.